Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time. Please turn all cell phones, electric devices to off or vibrate. Mr. Rick Moore, if you please lead us in our prayer place first.
Good morning. Thank you for this day and the blessings we're receiving from it, Lord. We ask that you would put our blessings upon each and every person here today and the families that they represent. Lord, we ask that you would lead us and guide us in the ways that we would go and give us the wisdom and knowledge to make good, sound decisions for the city of Bounder that everybody might benefit. I pray this in your name.
Our prayers are rooted in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, consider approval of the minutes of the January 21st, 2019 meeting, please.
So I'm perishing. Last page where we're talking about the City Council retreat. It says the Commissioner Jason Lourde made the motion and it also says, seconded by Jason Getz.
You're popular.
I think that was me, Jeff.
Anything else?
That's all, sir.
Motion to accept the minutes, wish corrections, please. Second. I'll say this again. All right. Any citizen who desires to join City Council or not be sued on the agenda may use so at this time. Per the open meaning act, the City Council may not deliberate on items presented under the agenda item. All presentations are subject to a five-minute time limit. Anyone here tonight not on the agenda, please. Is anybody? All right. City Council may consider to discuss or take action on awarding OJD Engineering, LP for the Engineering Services in conjunction with the 2019-2020 Texas Community Development Fund application, a potential award with Texas Department of Agriculture. Does OJD stand for anything?
Uh, OJ... Something, I can't remember the actual name of it. But they're out of, uh, Muggs. And we went out to bid with this engineering firms to procure services for, if and when we get the grant for our streets. We need an engineer to produce a plan that is submitted with this grant. And we went out to bid. We got three bids back. Here's a Todd who we've done business with before. Jacob and Martin whom we've done business with before. And OJD Engineering. We went through their proposals and their experience. And OJD expressed in their proposals more experience in regards to roadway construction. And so our committee chose OJD Engineering.
You have any questions?
Mike, have you not used OJD before?
We have not.
But you have used the other two.
We have used the other two. Primarily on waterworks projects. And now, if we were doing a waterworks project, those other two were fabulous. You know, their resume was stunning as far as water projects. However, they didn't mention a lot about roadway construction, water management, you know, and stuff like that. And I think basically what it boils down to is when they shoot these proposals out, they're really used to looking at water projects anyway, these bigger firms. And so they just shoot them out, you know, hoping that their name, I guess, comes, you know, with their portfolio. And we were actually looking at the experience that they dedicated to street work. So.
You had to head up your number?
$15,000.
I would guess you had to grow well above that.
Well, basically what you do is, professional services, you have to evaluate their services, not so much the dollar amount. So if you look in the Texas procurement manual, what they say is that you get in their proposal, evaluate who the actual best professional service provider would be for you, and you bring them in and start negotiating. And that's what we did. We brought them in and started negotiating. And they say if you can't come to a negotiated price, then you go to the second, well, highest, or your second best. And then you start negotiating prices with them. So that's how we did it. We brought them in, negotiated, came to an agreement. And so there's where we got it.
That's really a good.
Yes, she's fair.
Good fair price for what we've asked them to do.
Motion to award OJD Engineering LP for Engineering Services in conjunction with 2019-20 Texas Community Development Fund application, potential award with Texas Department of Agriculture.
Should we make that motion?
Oh, the paper's saying. No argument, you got the typing. All right, City Council may consider to discuss or take action on the reports and recommendations from the data source concerning financials.
While they're handing stuff out, I think this is going to be in regards to the three CDs that were cash, the $360,000 that we needed to account for for our general fund. We asked, well, my turn? Well, we asked a firm to send somebody to come take a look, go through our books, do a real hard leak at our, where we spent this money. And because it was in the general fund, it's very, you couldn't just go in and say, okay, this money was stuck here, you know, so we haven't spent it all on this. It was, it's like taking a jug of water and putting a bigger jug of water. It's all coming in, right? And they did a great job of going through and explaining how they came up with what the figures that they came up with. So, yes, sir.
Does this also include the $225,000 that was paid back from the grant?
We'll address that later, if you can, a little bit. So, anyway, so she's going to run through this, explain how they got their numbers and all the details.
Okay. So first on the executive summary, it's writing on page three. We were actually engaged to work with the internal controls and what is how the cash was managed and how, not just the cash, but also the other aspects, the whole aspects of the whole office. Who did what, who looked at what after whoever did it and things like that. And so those, it kind of tells you on the first page there, page three, what those issues that were discovered there. Assigning responsibilities for verification of internal controls, things like that that we looked at. And then we came up with recommendations. The recommendations are further in the back of the report. Then on the second page, it talks about the city money. We were actually engaged in what we were asked as we were looking at the internal controls, where the city's money went. So we did, and we looked at, and it kind of lines out pretty much a summary there. There was $61,000 and some change, plus another $105,000 of that city money that was paid back for loans that were, the CD was collateral for, so that's because loans were called. So that's about $165,000 and some change out of the, what was it, the $360,000 that the city money was. In the council meeting on October 5th, it was discussed that there was a shortage in the grant money that was coming in. Not a shortage, it was slow coming in. So the grant money was slow coming in from the Department of Agriculture, and they were using some of the city money for operations. There was an $80,000 shortage in revenue on sales tax. You're welcome to go on and listen to the minutes online, and you can, they'll talk all about this in October of 2015. And actually, a couple of meetings before that as well. So it wasn't like anybody was blind-talking what was going on. There was also a shortage, an additional shortage of $78,000. That was, I believe, in the sales tax that was short because of the body that went on with the controller and money was taken back out of the city funds. Not technically out of the city, but what was coming from the controller. So that was a shortage that they weren't not expecting. I'm not going to go through and read the whole thing too. I mean, it's pretty straightforward where the city money went. And if you want to look at more detail about that, Kevin, who actually wrote the report for me, tells exactly what he went through, what he looked at, so that you have an understanding of what his thinking was, especially on the internal control process. When I say internal control, I'm talking about the internal workings of the office and, and so just say Bonita does payroll and somebody else looks it over before it goes out the door to make sure there's not an error or something like that. Just an example. And then on page seven is some of the recommendations for the internal controls and things that might help the inner workings of the city to run more efficiently and not so one person doing everything, I'll just say. And then recommendations on page eight. He lined out exactly the water clerk, water utilities clerk, and different things, different personnel and what their duties should be and how separating those duties will work out throughout the city. And then on page nine, it starts with half of analysis of the city money and where that kind of flowed in and flowed out, which started in September. The CDs were deposited in the bank September 2nd of 2015, but that's not when the deficit started. If you look at page 10, in June 2015, there was a $55,000 deficit in cash. July, there was a little bit of a surplus of cash. August, there was a $114,000 deficit in cash. In August, that's when the CD money came in, there was a surplus of cash of $289,000, which was not all the CD money. In other words, it took some of the CD money to break even for that month. Then October and November, there was a deficit again. And then in the next, the few pages following, line out exactly what money went out month by month by month. Basically, the check ratio. So in September, it's flat lengthy because that's when the CD money came in, and that's when a lot of the bills were paid. So bottom line, the CD money went for operations, other than the loans that it went. Questions?
Yes. So basically what you're calling this, Kevin did, very thoroughly.
Yes.
Not just looking at funds that were spent, but also looking at how our organization is set up.
The workings of the office.
Right.
Yes.
And have been able to make recommendations on changes that would make us more efficient.
How they approve those.
Right. And in the course of that, looking for the, or coming across that $360,000, we were able to count for revenue over normal operation.
Yes, and I think if you look at the, on page...
Well, I mean, basically what I'm asking you.
Okay.
If you know you get paid a certain amount every month, okay? Say your salary is $2,000. And then you know your tax check comes in and you get $2,500. So in April, let's say, let's say you get it in April. You know your salary's $2,000, your tax refund is $2,500. So basically, you've got $4,500 in the bank. And you can look back at that and say, this is how we were able to separate the different monies. Is that basically what we're looking at?
Technically, the money was not separated out from the CD money to regular operating money.
Right.
It all went into the same bucket.
Uh huh.
But if you look at the cash flow, you can see where the, where more money went out than came in.
Right.
Money went out than came in.
Right.
CD money came in, even more money goes out, goes out than came in.
Right.
So there's a lot of reasons why that happened.
Right. But other than the reasons why it happened, this is basically what happened to our, to our tax refund.
That's right.
Okay, is it got spent basically on general expenses.
That's right.
Out of the general fund.
That's right. Other than the two funds that we could actually identify that were called because the CD was cashed.
Right, right.
That's correct.
Good. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
So when did the grant money that was delayed actually come in?
The grant money that was actually delayed, I believe it came in in...
It came in different months. It came in, it was about $70,000. We've been able to find where we thought. It wasn't just $225,000, it was $275,000.
That particular grant money, what's different about that, it wasn't grant money that came in and then it was spent. The grant money was spent and then we were reimbursed for it. So it wasn't like, did the grant money come in and we spent on something we shouldn't have? Grant money was already spent and then the city was reimbursed for that grant money.
Right. And it's not because we had $275,000 of cash laying around and we said, we want to use it and then get reimbursed later. A lot of that was work that we did, they call it in time. So it was our sewer treatment plant. We have equipment, we have manpower. You're digging pits, basically. But a lot of that work that was expended, you pan for fuel, you pan for...
And you have to submit those invoices straight to the state.
Right.
They approve the invoices and they approve that the work's done before you're reimbursed for it.
Right. And so that's why some of that money, it's not that we extended cash, it's that we expended resources, whether it be fuel, equipment, rental, payroll. And expecting to get that reimbursed, but if it comes in slow, then that's why they got into a bind, turned to the CDs, cashed them out, okay? And then use that to pay expenses. Yes, sir.
But that was in 2015. That was, how come they didn't sort it out, fix it, under fixing it now?
Well, we didn't.
How come they didn't fix it back in the day when they, you know, when they took that money out? You know what I mean?
Well, okay, you know, I think the original plan for what they, for what was written on some of the notes, okay, was that they had planned to cash the CDs and then use that money until the money from the grant came in. I think what happened, and I haven't verified this, but when the money came back in, they said, well, we can use this money on all these expenses, keep us in the black, right? Instead of going back to a CD, they used it on expenses. Is basically what happened. And I know they had sales tax wouldn't want, they thought it was going to be in that quarter.
Thought it'd be less, actually.
Right, it's like, I want to say $70,000, something like that.
$78,000.
Yeah, $70,000. So their sales tax, if you expect to get, you know, a refund check at $2,500 and it comes in at $200, you know, you start kind of shifting gears, because you're worried about the refrigerators or maybe down payment on the car, you know? So you start switching gears, trying to figure out how you're going to pay for that. Well, if you already know it's coming in, it should go back into savings, basically. But they decided at that time to use it in a different direction, which is neither here nor there, there's nothing we can do about it.
And that's why cities are required to do budgets.
Right.
And the councils are required to look at the budget and make sure that we're staying within budget. So you were staying within budget on expenses, just not so much in revenue.
Right, so, well, and you know, what basically cut this council off guard, okay, was that nobody was here that was there when it happened.
Right.
Right, and, you know, and we asked Bonita, and Bonita's about to expenses. You know, and did. It's right here in black and white, you can tell where the deposits were. And if you go up a little more, Corey, you can see the expenses here. Yeah, nope. Other way. There you go. Okay, so you have MPG Energy is electrical. I mean, it's from $495,000 to, I don't know, probably $100,000. I mean, these are just general expenses, tractor supply, West Central Wireless, Agroflex Heating and Air, Bounder National Bank, Weatherby Electric. I mean, these are just general weather day expenses that the city occurs and we needed to make up because we had lost revenue from sales tax. And, you know, so I know that they, what was it, 11th Street? They paved 11th Street during that time. That's going to be an expense, so.
Yeah, I think there was a couple of street projects that went on right before that.
Right.
Around the football stadium was one of them.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember, around the park was the issue. I don't know if it was paving or something in the park, but it's something at the park.
Right.
And one other street, maybe it was 11th Street we were going to.
Right. So, I mean, to answer the question, if you have some extra money and you need some paving done, especially, I think 11th Street had been fixed and drove for two years. So, you know, they decided, I mean, it's a major effort as well. So they decided to go ahead and pave that street with these funds instead of putting them back into the city.
Who paved the streets?
Uh, the city did.
City did.
Yeah. We basically bought the materials, we have the equipment to use for paving, and we have the manpower. So a lot of this, but, you know, even though we're doing the paving with our own equipment, it still costs us subsidies that kind of off the block, just in materials. So that's, you know, the base, then the asphalt, you've got to consider man hours, you know? So, we've, I'll say, Dale Stern, Kevin, her, the person who went through all this, I think he did a good job, I mean, getting it down to $17,000, $495,000, you know? And we're going to release all this so y'all can see it, put in the papers so we can, you know? Our biggest task after this came up was to make sure we knew where it went and then let everybody else know where it went. That way, I mean, we need to be transparent and, you know, working out the bank account, you can see where everything went. So, yes, sir.
So actually, what you're saying here is every year that all that was done, it didn't come up in the red, it come up in the black because I used reserves, it might have been in black.
That's right. The city money is considered cash on.
Period. You just overspent, you got all your CDs to come up in the black.
I believe that was actually a finding in 2015. I didn't do that audit, someone else did, but there was a finding in 2015 because of budget issues.
Right.
And that's why, that it has to do with that.
But each year, you should have come up in the red, you were really in the red.
But they weren't.
If you let your, what, not use your reserve.
Reserves are considered cash available for use.
Well, at one point in time, the reserves we had wasn't deep enough to come up in the black.
No.
Because then why have a budget?
That's up to the city council.
If you don't stick with the budget.
That's right. You've got to stick with the budget.
Well, and that's something we need to consider here is, is, you know, we have two CDs now. I think one's $123,000, the other one's right at $100,000. You know, it's had a prior meaning, it's set as a city, is set a reserve or set a minimum. That's what I'm looking to, is...
A minimum threshold balance?
Right.
You use that word before.
I think the school has to have a year in the rear, the I C or something.
Well, for all purposes, you're supposed to have enough cash in reserves for your short-term debt, whatever that is, and then any accounts payable which we have outstanding.
Right. But we need to go above and beyond that. That's what we need to make a decision for the council.
What do you recommend for a reserve for a city of this size and budget?
I would recommend whatever your short-term debt is for a year, so whatever debt you owe within the next year, which that could be $600,000, $700,000 sometimes.
Right.
And then, and then probably another $100,000 on top of that for any accounts payable that you might have in one given month.
Right. Well, see, I know, was it five years ago? They had around seven, so, you know?
That would be good reserve.
We might even, what's that?
Seven hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
And there were two?
Now we have two. We got some, I guess more.
There's a kitchen up there that. I don't see how you discount it like every year, the last five years, when you know you're overspending.
Right.
When you know we stop.
Yep.
Can have checks misplaced a ton of, I guess. You still really don't have an answer to what happened to your funds other than the fact that your budget was overspent, because you had to use reserves to come up in the black, simple.
Right. Now, you know, part of that, having a reserve, you know, if you have an emergency, if something comes up, you know, you would have that reserve to fall back on. Now, initially, the reserve did what it needed to do, is they were there when we needed it. You know, where we failed as a city is to catch back up and rebuild that reserve back up.
That's exactly right.
So, but now we're going to start. Oh, we got to, we got to. But, you know, this helps shed light on this, you know, endemic problem.
Well, they came up $10,000 short on their sales tax, they had a real $78,000 credit.
Right.
And that was beyond their control at that time, so they had to add it to do something.
Right.
And therefore, they did.
And that's where you dip into your savings.
That's probably equal $360,000.
Well, no, but we had two loans on top of it that had to be paid in order to get to that money.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Who has control of getting into the reserve or reserve right now?
Right now, it takes two signatures, before it took one, so.
Did it council approval?
Yeah, of course, the resolution.
Okay.
The bank won't do it just because I want to, you know, you have to have a resolution from the city council.
Yeah, let's say, I mean, I'm surprised we've used CDs, to be honest with you, mainly because they get so little interest and they tie your money out without any flexibility.
Right.
Most cities have their money in text pool or text store, which is basically a city government savings account, but it gives you the flexibility to draw from it any time.
Right.
But the same thing, you know? And I guess that's one thing I want to clarify, because from what Mr. New is asking, our budgets, you said we were following our expenditure, but our revenues weren't made. Is that correct?
In 15, that is correct, according to what the audit said, obviously.
How long have you done the audit here?
The first one I made was in 2016.
But have you seen evidence that we've been following our budget since you've audited us?
Yes, the budget has been amended to meet whatever the means are, which is what you're supposed to do, that's what you're supposed to do.
Right, it's following the budget means.
And that's happened.
Is it common for us to overshoot your sales tax by that much in the limits of the size?
It's not common.
$100 seems like a pretty good overshoot.
It's not common to overshoot it.
Up short, sorry, I meant the phrase was wrong there.
And yes, I mean, you can come up short, maybe not that much.
Is that audit correction? We had, in 2017, we set up a different kind of economic development organization. For whatever reason, we had to love that year and get a huge audit correction. organization, for whatever reason, we had to love that year, we had a huge audit correction, I guess, our entity in early had been paying, or, or, Brownwood had been paying, or, okay, our early entity had been paying Brownwood sales tax for about seven years, we don't get records of who pays that, and so, anyway, somebody caught it, and they took all that money out.
Right.
And it was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, totally unexpected, you know, you don't know until you get your check.
But they're not getting black.
Well, and, and we don't know what caused that shortage of sales tax.
Yeah, it wasn't audit on the controller, the controller did an audit on somebody that paid sales tax in Valner, and, I guess it was not to the controller's advantage to do that.
Yes?
What was their point of sale, change, uh, in the timeframe?
The same.
For Texas? Was it their...
I was Saudi, I have no clue.
Sir, short, you were sales taxes, around that time, what is it?
Molars and Verizon.
Yeah, so they changed it from, even though we make it here and sell it here, from where it gets delivered to, is, is who gets the taxes, that was a very large chunk of money that, that the city counted on year after year that was not there.
Well, that bound to been a change, especially with Molars, uh, that, that could have affected the sales tax.
And you can have somebody sign an agricultural exemption that was here, that if it decides to be audited, all of a sudden, that money goes from here to somewhere else.
And I think that's exactly what happened.
So that would explain the, the, a sharp increase in, in sales tax.
On what city?
Well, I mean, it's something the council needs to really think about when you start budgeting here, just 'cause you got a million dollars in sales tax last year.
Right.
Doesn't mean you're gonna get it this year.
That is correct.
You could put a cushion in there.
Right.
We never put, uh, I mean, estimate that was exceeding the year before.
Right, right.
Never.
Yeah, no.
You may cut your butt now.
Right.
That means you don't need to resent it.
Well, yeah, I mean, actually, if you, if you get more, it's great, really, you know, and then you can do something.
It's a CD back, it's good to get it, don't mean you got to pay it.
That is correct, that is correct, so...
Not only look at money that's in the bank to spend, look at money that's been committed or respent, kind of, and then money that you still have available.
Right, 'cause, 'cause we have some large bottom conditions.
That's right.
You know, so, uh, you know, we can look, care if we get forward then, so we can make those bottom conditions.
Okay.
Uh, another question is for you, Tim.
Okay. Page seven is all the recommendations that LAI40 drove, what's your plan? Make sure those get installed and implemented?
Right, uh, step by step, and, uh, start rolling these recommendations into effect, we may, make a few modifications.
Correct.
Uh, we plan on, uh, instituting all these recommendations into our...
I'll put a date on some of them, but pretty much as soon as possible or some...
Oh, okay, yeah, I mean, we'll start immediately, uh, some of them will be, that's gonna be next week, uh, what we'll do is sit down and have, have a meeting with, uh, the people who work in the office that are involved in these, these, uh, these work procedures, and then we can, uh, start putting dates in, 'cause some of us are gonna need, some people are gonna need to be trained up on it.
Right.
And then we can, uh, start instituting them, these type things.
I mean, I don't know how everybody else does, but to me, I might not be so mad as if you checked them off, you'd be, hey, we got this one, John, hey, we got this one done.
Well, my plan is to take these recommendations and, and bullet point them, and say, okay, and I'll show you.
Probably your management reports.
In management reports, we have some, some deadlines, for instance, the, the charter, uh, update, uh, the H R update, the...
You make those bullet points into the...
Right, we make those bullet points.
That's what I was getting at, that's what I'm making, so we've had recommendations in the past that overlooked or didn't align, or...
Right, so...
Some ways that you get some care of.
We make, we're gonna make bullet points, put some dates against them, that way, it gives you a goal, everybody sees it as a guide, and, you know, when you're done, you can check them off.
Oh, I see, I see, sir.
Yes, sir.
Oh, um, I was, I have a few questions, but I was gonna ask them here.
That's fine, I'll be here.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, moving along, city council may consider discussing taking action on the request from City Park Board to host their second annual barbecue cook-off in the City Park on June twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
I met with the park board last week, and they went through some of their, um, recommendations, well, their plan and what they wanna do for the, uh, the celebration of the park, and some of that, we're gonna help, uh, build a sandbox off it in the park, uh, we're going to, uh, extend and maybe add, uh, Washington phone, 'cause I think they have quite a contest, um, anyway, they're gonna have a band, uh, I, we put it on the agenda, just to make sure that everybody knew about it, and if you have any questions, you can talk about it, ask about it, we got two people here in the know, so, uh, otherwise, we'll just, I guess, proceed.
So we hadn't authorized for them to have it in the park yet, we basically talked about that back in the opening meeting, correct?
Right, but nobody voted on it.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, it wasn't an agenda, it wasn't something.
Right, okay, it was talked about, and just you...
We're gonna make, take an action on their question, make the motion here, please.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
City council may consider discussing taking action on passing a resolution establishing a city policy for closure of streets and alleys.
We, uh, we have an old ordinance on the books for the closure of streets and alleys, and recently, we had voted, or, I guess, had voted on table, decision to, uh, close an alley of Brown High School, uh, we started looking at our charter, and...
Ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, our ordinance, and, and realized we needed to update it to Texas laws and codes and stuff, so, we've issued this ordinance, and, uh, we'll need y'all to, I'll let Pat talk about it, if any changes or anything has been added, and then we can, uh, take action on that.
Well, this is, uh, it's just a resolution, uh, the policy that we follow, uh, and if y'all remember, I made, Bob, from the first, once we did, we, nobody knew about it, you remember, the, the folks, and you said, well, everybody would have been notified, no, and so we upheld that, we did that one for a while, and then we did, and so this policy basically will kind of establish a procedure for us to follow, the staff to follow, and let me kinda explain it to you, and, and, um, we'll start with kind of what we have on that, the one on the high school, Mr. Galavan. Uh, the, that one is apparently is, that's the first type of street, unopened, unused street, that works, we, somebody planted it, it's never been paved, it's happened a lot in cities.
We can actually, I'll agree.
It could be an alley.
Yeah, I think it was, uh, gentleman, Mr. Galavan, uh, we weren't using the street, you know, I just wanted to know if, uh, we were gonna go ahead and close that, we said we could, but there's, there's policies, you can't just sell this property on, you know, there's, when you take property for a street or a road, it kinda needs to go back to whoever owned it, is that right?
And basically, all streets, planted streets, that means the city just has an easement in the street, um, we don't own it in fee, like, if we bought, if we go out and buy a piece of property, we don't, in whatever, in fee, simple access, we, we don't own the rights to it, when a planted street is basically, we own just the easement, operate the street on it, the underlying property owners, the adjoining property owners on each side of the street, all of the actual real property to the center line of the street, so when we abandon this, and close the street and abandon it, it automatically refers to the adjoining property owners from the center line of it, so, just think of it in terms of adjoining, get half the beach on their side of the road, their, other side of the road gets their half, um, that's for unopened streets, and where since we haven't expended tax dollars on put pavement down and all of that kinda stuff, once we improve the street, uh, or, if it's a street we own in fee, we went and bought this property, and sometimes it happens, not often, but sometimes it does, then we have to get fair market value for the street, and we sell it, and we close it, and so, uh, that process would then mean that they have to hire a surveyor and appraiser, and basically get it appraised, and then they have to pay those costs, so, that's not what we worry about, Mr. Galavan, but that's kind of the difference, I don't know if y'all have done that in the past, to be honest with you, um, but it's, it's what's required by law, typically, when we own property, again, we have a fee, we own it, but really, what we're doing, when we're closing the street, getting our money back is what the money we've expended on improving the street, um, we have to get that fair market value for that, and it can be expensive sometimes, but, you know, obviously, imagine if somebody closes a main thoroughfare, we spent one hundred thousand dollars, seven, seven thousand dollars of...
Seventy-six hundred dollars of money.
Um, you could come up with expensive stuff, so, um, but anyway, so basically, for like Mr. Galavans, um, we'll have a public hearing, that'll be our notification to the public, and I really, I think it's a good practice, all the people on the road will have to sign the petition to close it, and so I've already talked to Mr. Galavan about that tonight, if we pass this, and there's a petition in here, then he'll, you take that petition, he'll sign it, you'll get all the adjoining property owners to sign it, that way, we know they know about it, 'cause they're either gonna sign it, or they're gonna oppose it, and sometimes they oppose it, and if, if a person wants to keep, and sometimes it's an alley that's not, you think it's used, but they use it for rear access or something to their house, and they may not want it closed, and so they have a right to come to us and say, I don't want it closed, we, whatever happens, our decision, we have the sole and absolute decision to close the street either, as a council, you don't have to, you can't be forced to, it's your decision, your total discretion, so, that's the main thing, is, is that, because we have these streets and basic alleys, and we have the, the control over them, and we get to decide whether we keep them or not these streets, um, so basically, this will allow Tommy and staff to have a set procedure, we'll, you know, have everybody who wants to close it fill out this petition, so they'll, you know, we'll put a note on there, if there's any utilities and things like that, typically, when we close a alley, say if it's got water or sewer line, you'd wanna reserve, obviously, that water or sewer line in the closure, and so whatever we deem, um, what this does, having, y'all may not wanna do it this way, but basically, it takes anybody paying for that publication of this paper from the public hearing, so they'll, we're gonna reimburse us for that, it also reimburses us for our legal fees, so if I have to do a deed or an ordinance, then they're gonna pay a portion of that, they don't like that typically, but, I mean, it's up to y'all to decide, I mean, one of the things I told this gentleman, and I think they have used to do deeds to everybody, um, you don't have to, because once you abandon it, automatically, you can just file that resolution, get certified copy from beneath it, and certify, and we file it in the deed records, and it shows the essential that they get on his side, I'll talk to the appraisal, the, uh, the appraisal district about that, make sure they're okay with it, a lot of times, the appraisal district will pitch it to the back, 'cause they wanna see, you know, a needs and bounds description, unfortunately, unless somebody hires a surveyor, all you're gonna do is get a deed from me, says you got one half of the street, I don't, I don't, you know, if it's a twenty-five foot street, I guess you could say you get twelve and a half feet, it's not a very exact description, is my point, and so, it really, um, you know, that's why we talked to them about, um, but basically, for, it depends on how the appraisal district handles it, and of course, in Brownwood, our mayor was a title lawyer, and he didn't like to do it that way, so he made me do deeds, so, we did it this way, with deeds, in most of the cities I represent, we just follow, we just take the resolution and, uh, and file that in the deed records, and that's sufficient, at least cuts down the cost for the people involved, actually, so, um, it probably, it has the same effect, it's just, you know, you don't have a, a deed, but all you're gonna get from us is an quitclaim deed anyway, so it's not, and quitclaims are not really favored anyway, so, uh, anyway, this ought to suffice, I told Mr. Galavan that, he emailed me today, and he was saying, he kinda liked to have one of those deeds, uh, but I'll just tell him, I'll talk with our appraisal district here and find out if they're okay, but tell him, you know, because based on that, he'll have to reimburse us for legal fees and things like that, so, um, he may not like that, so, um, but I think that's just, I mean, I think that's, otherwise, we, we foot the bill for everything, and at the end of the day, I mean, why should we not get reimbursed for basically doing a favor for what we're doing to the citizens, and I'm not saying that it's, it's not good business, I mean, I've, probably one thing I've done in twenty years is closed more streets than I can count on, you know, taking my shoes off and, 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 you know, hundreds, if not thousands of streets through the years, because it just, it's a natural thing of cities, uh, sometimes for alleys, and sometimes for planted and unused, so, it just happens a lot, so, and we want people, it gets it back on the tax rolls too, so, if they, if they're using it already, it would like to use it, then it makes sense for us to close it, uh, so anyway, that's the policy and petition, and, uh, and then what we'll do is when we, uh, we can pass this, I told you we wanted to close the street tonight, uh, but then we can take action, if you'll, feel, I'll send him the petition, and, uh, you get that back to us, and when you go, it's made, and it's closed, everything, if everything goes, uh, according to plan, as far as getting the petition signed, and, uh, you know, we can start closing it, and we can pass, pass an ordinance, actually, to close the street, so, uh, so that's, that's the plan, and that's what this policy, I just wanted to, to have a policy in place that we didn't have to do, kind of, you know, just as we go along, and, and that way, makes it simpler for the staff, and simpler for the council to say, you know, this is what we expect, and this is what, you know, if the council staff does it, then you're happy, so, if y'all are happy with the resolution, and I suggest we pass it, you have any changes, it is changed.
Uh, I got, I got a question, if you got, or, uh, whether you're closing the street or alley, and the city themselves, if they're just, they have to run back to the current one, is the, the act go through the same procedure?
Yes, to close it.
Yes. Uh, one of, uh, one of the owners said they don't want that.
Then you, you have an option not to close it.
I mean, you call the, if you're gonna call a suit?
He could, he could, and that's what we usually consider, basically, if a, if somebody has been horses, particularly, there's no, you, no real reason for them to say, you know, sometimes, we've had it happen where somebody just, uh, we actually had, where they wanted to store some money out of the other property owners, but if they use it for access, and they told us that, then most likely, we wouldn't close it, so, depends on the reason for it.
When you got our, uh, intensity to have water or sewer, and that, how do you do these things?
Yeah, that's...
Oh, yeah, reserve, and you drive away.
Yes, we really reserve that easement, and, and that's, uh, if we did the, whether it's by ordinance, we reserve the easements for our favor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've got a question, um, the city owns a property on both sides of the road, and nobody has a dog in that fight, does that still have to put it out there for people to try and get, because they don't actually have any rights to that thoroughfare?
We did that this last year, actually, where we own most sides of it, but, and this is what we, we found out, we will still follow this procedure, we'll do a public hearing, uh, we won't charge ourselves, since my father paid anyway, but, uh, and obviously, you know, we're gonna have to pay for the public hearing notice, but we'll follow the request that we did, if y'all recall, that's still... The key petition, beyond the street that was closed, and she uses our street for ingress and ingress, and so, I think we, I asked, told Tommy about that, said, if y'all remember, we passed that, and then I think we were close to rescinding, y'all recall it, I don't know if we ever did, to be honest with you, I don't know if...
We did still, we did vote.
But the council did vote. We did vote to rescind it, I couldn't remember.
Yes, we rescinded it.
Uh, but yeah, that's, and that's, that's kinda what I was thinking of, exactly why, if we didn't have public hearing, we didn't really, you know...
Yeah, we were finching off for ingress.
Yes, exactly, and so, yeah, that's the answer is, is it's still mainly the purpose, 'cause there could be people that are not on the portion being closed, use that as property, and that was a quick example, where that way, she used that to get out of her property, and it, because of the roads, there were dirt roads there, and some muddy, and there's, um, she told us and explained to us that it was necessary for her to get out, so, so yes, the answer, we're following the same procedure.
I got a question, uh, if in this road, we do have water lines, sewer lines, whatever, uh, particularly with, if they have a gas line running down through there, my understanding is that Mr. Galavan is willing to build on this, can he build over those lines?
No, no, if we, if we reserve any easements, the water, sewer, or certain gas lines... If we, if we reserve any easements, water, sewer, or certain gas lines, we'll save there and you can't build them. And so a lot of times people, you know, that's, they don't realize they're not getting much. And they're gonna, they might have a, you can use it for a, you know, a drive over it, I guess, to drive into your property, but you can't put concrete or paving and you can't, you know, put in a real building, you know, it's gonna get us structured. And that's what we, we would make sure in our easement, you know, we've probably already got an easement place anyway. If we don't have an easement, we'll file a new easement that says that.
Sir. This area we're talking about, is that a butt up against Rick Sonnenberg's property?
I think so.
Might tap into Tommy news and this, but shouldn't, he owns all the way from 11th to 13th. At one time did an alley, was an alley designated to go all the way through his property also, through Joe Gazelski's property, old property. Was that purchased from the city or?
I think that was closed, that's what Mr. Galavan was saying, has been closed previously, I think.
Yeah, they just don't use it, it's not technically closed. I mean, they don't use it. And I mean, it's still technically as an alley and.
Technically the city?
We have the easement.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Right, right. That's correct. And they're just wanting, they're wanting to get the deeds and everything squared up if that's the case. So this ordinance allows us to do that.
But Reagan is not party to this.
He's not, he would be party to this, but he, he's not the one coming to this. Right. I haven't, I don't know if he's party to it or not, but actually.
But what we're talking about could possibly affect the course.
Yeah, but I think that's what this gentleman wants, is that alley closed, is that what he's saying? I don't understand his request exactly.
He, he's wanting it in his name, basically, not technically leaving the alley, you know. And maybe he just needs more original throw of football or something. Yeah, but anyway, that's kinda what brought this up. And that, this came up last year and they tabled it at the time and it just never, so he was asking about it, so we needed to go ahead and pull it back up and make a discussion.
Well, again, at that time, when we tabled it, there was a question about the deed.
Right.
And therefore that was supposed to investigate further and frame that issue.
That was just about two weeks before we hired Tommy, I think it just kinda fell through the cracks.
So here we are with the ordinance. So all we're gonna do is accept it.
We made a motion that we pass a resolution establishing city policy for closure of streets now.
Let me first. Let me first. I'll let me say aye. All right, we moved on from agenda item six a little quickly, that's my fault. Needed to accept the report given by Ms. Kayla Folletton concerning the finances as presented. And a motion to accept those.
That's just accepting that you gave us?
Correct. We accepted the report.
How many motions to accept the report?
Two seconds.
Oh, favor say aye.
All right.
All right, that was my fault, sorry about that. All right, jumping to agenda item nine, consider approval of building permits. I believe you had one, sir.
Uh, yes, Wayne Corolla at the 405 Hamilton, on the 20 foot, I didn't know.
Motion to accept building permit as presented, please. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All right, city council may consider especially take action on the monthly police activity report from Mr. Chris Sarge. How are you, sir?
All right.
Good.
All right, um, let's see, we had a little rest this last month, we both fell under arrest. Took 28 reports, so most of our incidents were missed from here. Nine traffic accidents, 304 calls for service in the month of January. Seven code violations, citations and over citations, including those, and 75 for over $6,311 in response. Also, the, the JAD grant that made final loss for $94,200. It's not done yet, but it's been finalized. And just as an update, Anthony Hirsch, the gentleman we're quoting through the academy, he is a little past the halfway mark and he's a little better than average, he's always got his grades and I talked to the instructor over there, well backed, and he said he has no concerns. He can see him on a different one than the class they have. And total mileage for all the vehicles this month was 9,265 miles.
I have a question. He said code violations?
Yes.
Southern?
Yes.
Okay. I wanna stand on that. Recently, we, Mr. Chad Mercer's been made a code officer as well as a police officer. And so he is, one of his job functions now is to, as he goes up and down the streets of Alton, look for barrel cars, barrel houses, barrel lots that have, in the home that need it. So he has started to give citations for that. And, and they go before judicial. So.
And you only found seven violations?
No, that's, how many violations they've recorded? Uh, more maybe working through, just wait through the system there.
If I may, the process with that isn't just like right between days, you have, there's several additional steps. They have to give an order, they have to fix it, and then if they don't fix it, you go back.
What it is, they go before judicial and sometimes they'll give them 30 days, 50, 60 days. In most cases, six months. It depends on the property. For instance, we had just, one of the properties that we sold in a tax, from a tax, we had received from a tax sale, we sold the property to Ms. Mary Davis. Ms. Mary Davis in turn sold the property to Mr. Vinnie Bello. Mr. Vinnie Bello had it for a month and got citation. So, you know, but, but we are working with these individuals. We're letting them dunk everything at the recycle center free of charge, because actually that was kind of an extension of the city wet cleanup. He wanted to get everything there that day, he just, it was long enough and he didn't have the manpower all at once. So, but we are working with people as these issues come up. There was a barrel of car right behind me, one stopped. We're gonna go ahead and help these individuals. We'll, we'll pick it up, we'll take it away from them if they need us, need our help to do that. Some people have the ability, some people don't. So we're kinda working on this case, but I really wanna get, let the citizens know that, you know, we're here to help, you know, if they need it, everyone needs cases to help. So, cause we, you know, we're not here to take their money, we're here to help them out. Yes, sir.
Tommy, remember they give you 30 days, that they did me. Am I gonna get another one for, for, to show up or what?
Uh, well, after you 30 days are up, you'll need to go back to the judge and the, the officer, he has, he took pictures of it before and now he can go back and take pictures of the actor and present that to the judge and she may give you the gold star. I mean, you know, if you, if you get the lot cleaned up. If you don't, then depending on your circumstances, she might give you a little more time or, you know, if there's nothing moved, then she might.
But it's in the process. So she would probably.
Well, let me work on the numbers of last month. The seventh of this month, they gotta show up again or what?
Uh, not unless you weren't charged to do something.
No, I'm still, yeah, I'm still, I'm still working on it real hard.
Right, no, I know you are. And if she gave you 30 days, uh, you know, before the 30 days of up, you might go to her and explain to her, but you've made a lot of progress in a short amount of time. So she'd be, she would love to work with you. She, she doesn't want to give people a ticket or fine for this. You know, she just, you know, wants you to clean it up. And you only had a month of ownership, you know, so I mean, you didn't have a lot of time to begin with. So she was more than willing to work with people, so did yourself. And, and, and that's a kind of a, you know, we don't mind helping and, and, you know, this little certainly doesn't wanna give people fines for, for, you know, these citations. She just needs a little, a little effort is all she's requiring. So, yeah.
Should we do an animal control?
Uh, currently, our animal control officers should come for a little bit and then have to leave back to Austin. In the interim, Chief Stan is supposed to be taking care of that.
And we do have the part-time employee that does maintenance.
Yeah, now.
Do you have a big animal, but she does maintenance?
Right, the maintenance part, they do have a person there that makes sure the animals have feed, water, it's all cleaned out, so. But if we have a dog running loose per the state of Texas, the laws in the state of Texas, Chief Stan is responsible. So you see it running down, dog catcher, that's so then, you know.
See them in the shed?
Yeah, well.
Little tranquilizer gun?
Yeah.
They'll use them? Uh, they have a dark hole down that, they don't have them, they cost a lot of money. So we have, I have to say, he's.
He's attached.
Oh, yeah.
I wouldn't wanna get that close.
John, you had Chris? Chris, is that all you had?
Uh, yes, sir. Any other questions?
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, here's the city ministerial five weeks of report, please.
All right. Uh, I wanna, I didn't really make it into the, to the agenda this week. Uh, we had an issue with Republic that I need to talk about. We, in our process, uh, looking at our, our finances and different facets of it, one of the facets is trash, or let's say the water bill. It has different facets and we're reviewing different pieces of it. One of those is trash. We started looking at our trash, our invoices for, for Republic and we weren't sure that it's quite right. So I had Jack with the recycle center, since he deals with the solid waste management often, start going through some of the invoices. And we found some anomalies that we've constantly, some errors, some of them are part, some of them on, on Republic's. But I'll let, I'll let Jack kind of explain, but basically, uh, over the billing errors, we went to Republic and asked them to look at them and they agreed. And we can retroactively change that for the last six months. And it's gonna be, what was it, Jack, 20,000?
Uh, right now, the current estimate for the past six months, which is four months shy of our actual oil pill account, is gonna be around 16,000 is what we're gonna get credited on this next bill.
That's sort of the last six months. Okay, going forward, because we found these, these areas, uh, and.
We're looking at saving an additional $10,000 every six months for the rest of the contract.
Which is 40.
By staying on top of these accounts.
Right.
So about 8,000.
We've had it for six years. Now, we haven't pelt into, when we, we started the, this new contract within the last year and a half.
Say today, let's say.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna go back through all of this recent contract. We started looking a little bit at the previous contract and a lot of things have changed from the last contract to this contract. And so we're gonna have to see what the nuances are on how they came up with their figures. Cause even a little complicated, you can hear dumpsters that are divided by several different people in one households and you have commercial dumpsters and residential dumpsters. So once we get all this together, we can kind of just do a cursory review of the prior contract and then see what the problems were, if they were actually filling us, if we were turning in our, our account correctly. And basically that's, that's why I say when it's some of our fault, it's some of their fault. Some of our figures that we turned in, that we're supposed to turn in monthly, some of them didn't get turned in or they didn't get turned in correctly. It may have been a water meter count versus a, the trash unit count. So going forward, we've, we fixed this problem. Problem, the animal is that we didn't have one person dedicated to review this. It was passed around just like a set child. And so it would, some people don't necessarily look at it or understand the same. So it may have been different each month. But now going forward, we have a dedicated person just for, just to review Republic, to make sure our counts are accurate and to make sure their billing is accurate. Uh, another, uh, one of their issues that we found was, uh, some of the places in the city, they were counting as being out of the city, so the rates were higher. So once that's been fixed.
All 37 accounts from the flats were being charged as outside of Simmons for the contract this far.
So was Hillcrest as well, that's, that's from my understanding.
Well, we had some in Hillcrest that were marked down as commercial.
Right.
But I went back, hadn't changed in, back into a residential account.
Right.
But they're charged for that dumpster that being out of town, didn't really shift one way or the other.
Right.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. I pay a commercial rate, I am a business.
Right.
But I'm not there, I'm picked up three times a week. I'm lucky if I get picked up once a week.
Right.
Because of where I'm located. I'm in a residence, but I'm paying commercial.
We can address that if you can give it to Jack later. We can get something fixed about it. Anyway, this is the information we just wanted to put out and I would've added it, but it kinda came late, so.
Question in the room before you step on, this is a lot entirely with this contract, so we had this for a year and a half.
A new contract.
A new, it's a new contract.
That's totally.
But they're only going to work with us for the past six months on the credit view.
Right, and, and that's just.
Is there a reasoning behind that with Republicans?
That's our initial, when we went to them, that was their initial offer, we took, we not, at least six months. We wanna get a little more information on, behind us before we.
Probably do the rest of it. Or they, can they do that? Can they just say, we're only fixing for six months instead of.
Typically they're in corporate policy, but depending on what we find, the further we go back, it, we might have a little more ground to stand on.
You said that was, was it going to be like 25 hundred a month or is it 16,000 or six months?
Right.
I know they came out and visited with us in my, remember? And he did that with us.
He was there, he was there.
And he came and talked with Randy and like made it on. That was.
Right. When that contract started, they had some billing issues. Uh, we had to split up some of our residential dumpsters, just supposed to have three or four per dumpster, so breaking that down. And, and, and really it's, it's going block by block, saying, okay, these four people can use this dumpster and these two people over here have to use this one over here because it's closer, you know, so however, whoever, who do they, you set it, who there? You know, but it kind of leads to a question that we might broach in the future, is, is looking at roll out dumpsters versus what we have now. Go to a small truck, you know, so, you know, it, it just depends on, on what we do with our recycle center in the future. I, I don't, I don't, I don't propose to do that now. I'm just saying these options, there's a lot of options that we can put on the table in the future. We just gotta really look at them to see if that's something that would benefit the city as a whole financially and also meet customer needs. You know, I'm already getting a nose, so I mean, you know, it's a balance. Uh, you know, I'm already getting a no, so I mean, you know, it's a balance, you know?
What, what is your rate now in residence? For housing?
Is it twenty-six and fifty-six, residence?
Well, right now, uh, what the city charges on your bill is, uh, it's just went up to the new rate from twenty-fifty to twenty-one.
Twenty-one twelve.
Twenty-one twelve.
That's exactly what the trash company charges?
No, that's.
Or the city got some added one.
That's, that's, I think, our charge. Yes, that's one of our administrative charges.
How much have been in, two dollars, three dollars, four dollars, what, what's our?
About seven.
Seven?
But that over should be charged for residential, we have extended that over to the recycling center. The person don't really make money off of that, we've got that opened up so that everybody's already pays the trash bill, can come and get rid of their bulk stuff that doesn't fit in their dumpsters. They can bring it down there because they're already paying for garbage. So that covers that, so you can get charged by tonnage and container down there.
Which kind of goes back to the recycle center and recycling center. If we can start collecting recyclable goods, we can then start, uh.
Work on sort of dusting, we can save money on that end.
Well, and then use those some stores.
Why don't they furnish a recycle bin for strapping goods?
Well, and that's something we can talk to them about.
They used to.
Right, right.
Because we now have a pickup, from the contract, they used to pick up alleyways, we started doing this, so they harness this dumpster to bring it.
Right. Jack, give them a shoot, see what we can, we can expand on.
We use that extra dollar over the household or commercial, that's what we pay them with.
Right.
Because trash trucks, there's a more payment, more outages than any vehicle out.
Right, I think currently our estimation of what it would take to redo just the alleyways is a million point four. So, and that's why we might be looking at going to a smaller truck and using smaller dumpsters or roll-out vehicles. But anyway, that's kind of down the road.
What did you say, is it sixteen thousand a month or what?
We are getting a credit of around sixteen thousand on our next bill. The one that's coming in for January will be credited sixteen thousand already, which will lower our bill.
Maybe in ten thousand?
Ten thousand every six months by keeping these numbers correct.
Every six?
Every six months.
So the life of the contract, you're looking at it.
About ninety-six thousand altogether, from what we've already compensated up getting and what we're gonna save in the future.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying, I want to be sure I said that figure in my mind.
Same charge in the city, not a huge dollar or what?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, let's see, let me move on, uh. I've, I've, I haven't added this here, but Pat sent the city manager evaluation form for the city manager. So if you guys can take a look at that and.
When we actually wanted to, our actions, doing an evaluation in six months or?
Well, assuming that's.
That was always agreed on at the beginning, so this is just a form.
Yeah, I was curious, do we agree to the evaluation, or just agree to probation?
That's a, that is a bag way sent in the probation period.
Okay.
That's what I think, pretty much.
We're gonna use this form for six months even though it actually, uh, yearly.
We could actually use that as a yearly as well.
I like it as per yearly for like the, our city.
Well, I live in, I lived through it and I think, I can work with that.
I like it as a, as a template for sure for everybody.
Right.
I think we can install that.
So, and.
For everybody?
Right, a rating system for everybody. Well, keeps them aligned for whatever, those were employees or sitting there.
I was thinking we could do lots of this for places and stuff. Gary, uh, where our, our HR review, we're looking at, you know, something, so maybe not incorporate some of these in here as well.
Oh, I guess, our question is, we fill out evaluations, we turn them in, they're evaluated to the mayor. And what happens to these things after? Who ha, who will have access to this information?
Well, that goes into your personal file.
All files are subject to that.
Well, that's my, that's my question, we're supposed to do that for next meeting, are we doing this next meeting?
Well, it was supposed to be on the agenda, not just a review, but as far as to look at the form to accept it. If you accept it, then we can put it on the agenda as far as that.
We don't have it on there.
Yeah, we have it on, everyone has it on the agenda.
Tommy, I'm sure Tommy knew it, saw this, he would say it was overkill. Well, I'll ask him a little bit, but, uh, to me, it's overkill, I'm on these pages and pages.
I think it's overkill for a six-month probationary period. That's what I was, uh, for a year long, year, for a year longer, you guys, great. Yeah, for a year of the probationary period, I think it's overkill, awesome.
If you'll read Hancock's article in the paper.
Yes, sir.
It states your goal, or you have to use copy and paste it. If you'll read Hancock's article in the paper.
Right.
You'll realize your future goal. If you read Hancock's article in page, paper, the last paragraph or two.
Right.
That's my evaluation view. I'll, I'll paste that.
Evaluation actually.
But given the numerical grade, all of this stuff, it's already been out there.
Well, that's kind of what I didn't put on the agenda, we could, we could actually, if you wanted to, go through it, see if there's anything you wanted to do. Uh, I mean, it's, it's yours to change if you want, so.
I'm like, you asking for annual evaluation, yeah.
Right.
Little, little strong, little.
It is extensive, so.
And who generated this?
Uh, it came from Pat, which she probably got it from Brownwood.
Marv's, Marv is a lot different than that one.
Did it come from Little Park?
No.
That felt like a garage, really.
No.
You can search them on the web. There's some that are way more lengthy than that.
This one, I really kept it, I, I, I like the numerical grades mainly because you don't have to describe a bunch of narrative. But I think the main part of it, I think really is Tommy putting out what his, you know, he's had his impediments for his goal score. And really, that, he didn't take it from you guys about what he's trying to achieve, yeah.
That's my impediment.
It's really set to open a dialogue, that's what it's there for. And, uh, you know, it, for a six-month review, not all of it will apply, parts that will apply, you fill it out, that way when you get your area, it's, it's right, it's all the same deal. That's, you know, I, I, to be honest with you, I've never done a six-month evaluation form or interim form, separate than a regular visit evaluation form. A lot of it probably wouldn't apply, I went through it, tried to fill out some stuff, we don't do, um, we don't have, and just see. Just kept it fairly generic, you know, about on each one of the components, staff, and that sort of thing. So it's really, I tried to cut down the work on you guys, would have to, I mean, I, I like the numbers.
I like them.
But I don't like that a lot of much narrative, and, and that's me, well, I do it in a motion, I like it pretty short. But again, use whatever you want to use on it, I mean, I think it's just a, it's a starting point and tool to do whatever evaluation you want to do with the city manager or whoever else.
I already liked the, the numbers for the six months.
It's not all got numbers, all the paragraphs are right.
Just gotta take questions.
A year we can do paragraphs, for six months, I think the numbers would be sufficient.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yes. The police department has one if you want, but I was on the front of that, front of that one page, it's mostly numbered and very little writing.
Thank you. Bring that in when we, we, they, shoot.
Paul, how do we want to proceed with, have we want to review this form, or just put on the agenda, let me work for the six months and see how it goes? I think that could basically be it. And I'm really. Tommy, sorry, were you doing this?
Uh, well, my contract, which I didn't have, uh, they said, if you do your job, uh, you can leave us with notice in the coming year ready. If you don't do your job, we can leave you with two weeks' notice.
That's about it? How, I sure do, I kind of like that, but I'm overwhelmed always, pages and pages.
I understand, a lot of things changed since we were first here, Bob.
Don't go with it. The form is actually short, if you don't want to modify or have that modified for six months, you got that far.
I think about six months, I like that, dude, just taking away the narratives and, and having grades, just the number, maybe the last page, the last, the numbered pages. Then the year that comes around, we can actually go through the narrative.
We didn't have a grade sheet, we don't have, but we, we, we got, we got six increases, man.
Right.
If you've done it so many months and done good, your score would be, you know, if it's over seventy, then you got your grades. If not, you stay.
Step, grade, and.
Okay, we can modify the form and I can shoot it out to you guys.
So Pat, take care of the language.
So, Jason, let's go on that numerical.
I think numerical is fine, before we get it cleared in the end. I don't know why we made that too, too deep on it. Year-long one comes around, you know, they're asking for money, then we need to hit the more detail, but.
Yeah, I will. All right, uh, moving on, uh, we've got, uh, finances and spending. Uh, in your packet, we had the accounts table, check register, and the balance national bank. And this is a seventeen pages, which basically lists all the checks that you've written from October first to current, well, January, uh, January thirty-first. And we reconcile, on the, on the right, you'll see status cleared, and on the back page, you can see it's just a zero, it's not cleared. That means the check still, you still need to reconcile that against her.
Just a couple of questions, probably just from my perspective, because I'm overwhelmed with a lot of these numbers, but there's a lot of things going out to individual citizens. I assume those are like water deposit refunds or something?
Some of them are, now.
Some of them, like, for example, page five, there's one that says a few thousand dollars, I mean, just, what a cause of sin, they give a two thousand dollar act a month.
Yeah, but it ain't all worth your piece coming back and did.
Yeah, that's right.
That was, that was our dump truck. We bought a dump truck for two thousand dollars.
From her? I mean, her family?
Oh, her husband.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
No, that's fine, I just, that's fine, I just, that's one time, my question was like, who are these people?
Right, that, that was our dump truck. Uh, you'll see a lot of twenty-dollar, uh, payments in here, and instead of buying telephones for our, our staff, or radios and having a radio system, what we do is pay twenty dollars towards their phone, and we don't put it towards in their paycheck because they would be taxed for that. Uh, this is actually a separate payment where they can take that and use that towards their variety bill, you know? Uh, cause we found that, you know, we communicate more with our cell phones than in a radio, and having a radio, they get broke sometimes, we have to replace some of their. Every, we have to have a tower to maintain that, that radio system, so we just give a cycle, basically, to the individual.
Every year, will you get that?
Once a month, that's correct, yes.
No, not every, not every department has.
Once we have our, like, dispatcher call us at twelve o'clock for a leave.
Right.
Like a water, or whatever, that's the one I'm gonna give.
Right, yeah, but, but, but not all of those.
No.
So I just, I'm curious, that's a lot of names, I was.
So that total is about eight hundred dollars, you think that should be an investment then, instead of just supporting ASI or something?
Well, I mean, you know, like, like our guys, I, I make all somebody individually, okay? You know, instead of getting them their own phone and paying seventy dollars a month in the foot hand, and, you know, they, they just have their own phone. So, because if, if we had a plan that encompass all the phones, where we'd give department heads and we'd have our own phone, you know, AT&T system, or Verizon or whatever, you know, we're not only paying for the phone, we're paying for the service, the monthly service, then we have to worry about them using it correctly, you know, what they're using it for. Uh, so this just really simplifies what we're doing with our communications.
Did everybody use it correct?
Not all of them, no. I think most just the, our part of the guys.
I had a question, I ran into this one before, and just, you know, if I'm moving, not looking at any provision in that to where you are not responsible for the pollution as well. Therefore, you're not consuming, you're not assuming the ownership of about paying twenty dollars, that way, if the phone is dropped, stepped on, whatever, you're not responsible for the replacement of that phone. We've had that brought to our attention several times.
Yeah.
You know, we were around with the same policy, just saying, it might be an opportunity to do that.
That might be something, that's very short policy.
It's a suggestion.
Okay. Uh, got any, you know, questions about accounts table, we'll check first.
Fine.
Uh. We have, we have ten accounts, bank accounts, uh, it's this one here, the stage in your packet. Uh, we've just recently added two bank accounts, and this is for the, uh, the bond that we recently, well, the bond that we recently received from Texas Water Development Board. We needed to create these two to, uh, track their funds, and, uh, actually nine, I'm sorry, that's all bank account. Anyway, uh, city park fund, uh, tax, wastewater steward, series two oh one. Uh, we have, and this goes back to another water bond, these, these, essentially, that's a park fund. Uh, you have a square account, you have a municipal stewardship type fund, the operational county fund, which we basically call the general fund, and the revenue bond reserves. So these are the balance as of the third of January.
That's square account, is that airport?
Uh, no.
Excellent. Where they get, where they get.
Yes, that's why I forgot. Okay, that's gonna be two and one, we're reading the few, I'm gonna document.
Let's see, we have another airport account, so. Yeah. Uh, let's see. We have our statement of everything using expenditures, we can basically have revised budget, it's this page here, if you flip through your. Shortly. You see, uh.
Is that done?
Okay.
Got three done?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Total revenues, you see current actual versus annual budget, and year-to-date, and where it's sixty-six percent. Uh, so expenditures, the current actual, the annual budget, and the year-to-date, where it's seventy-one percent. And then you have the excess of revenues over expenditures. Next one, we have the sales tax report.
These are your financials, you shouldn't be.
Yeah. Uh, for this one here, twenty nineteen, we go through October sales tax. For fiscal year twenty nineteen, we go through October sales tax, fifty-two thousand eight hundred thirteen point four cents versus fiscal year eighteen. Last year, it was sixty-one, so it was down. Uh, now, in, in October, last, between last year and this year. Uh, between, in November, between last year and this year. Uh, last year was hundred fifty-seven thousand, or almost a hundred fifty-eight. Uh, this year, we're two hundred thousand, so we're, we've gone up quite a bit. December last year, fifty-one thousand, December this year, fifty-four thousand. January, forty-nine thousand, this year, fifty-three thousand. So we've got an increase. We, we've not yet had February, uh, last February, hundred fifty-six thousand, sales tax. So, uh, we're anxious to see what's happening this, this year.
What's your trend? Sir, what creates your up and down trend?
I'm not sure.
Fifty-seven million a month, forty-nine.
Is it too much behind? Is it basically say your, you know, check for February is, it's either November or December month, or?
I think it's a month.
I bet, I bet that's why it's outdated, it's probably November, December.
Right, so, right, remember. Next. This, this month of February, uh, we should get sales tax from, from Christmas. Uh, the total this year so far, three hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, sales tax. Uh, I'll include the, a balance sheet for the general fund. Our cash fund, our general fund, which one, negative four hundred twenty-six thousand, I guess is the budget. So, this is one of the items that I talked to Gable about, looking at. Uh, because it, it shows against the budget. It, it, it increases, uh, very flush ways for, for sales tax. We need to figure out how in USDI to address this, the same flush way is quite good. And, um, versus, for instance, if you look at, uh, now, this is the balance sheet for the general fund. You'll have one that looks just like the airport and the water. Balance sheet for water shows a positive three hundred eighty-three thousand for cash. And for airport, a positive hundred thirty-two thousand. And this is actually one of the issues that Ava, uh, Kevin said he thought he knew what the problem was and somewhere between USDI and how we do our accounting system, with our different accounts. Uh, I just got to nail for down on how we're going to fix it. And we may just end up moving to a whole different software. USDI has been giving us a lot of problems in our accounting. And, uh, we're looking at moving to a different software to get rid of some of these little bugs that are in our system. Uh, but, okay, so we have the balance sheet for our general fund, airport, and the water steward. Uh, next will be the statement of revenues, expenditures, adding expenditures. For the general fund, airport, and the water steward. And here you can look at, this kind of tells the story of the budget. Uh, if you look at the general fund, you can run through, the last line on your right, and it tells you how much budget remained per our, our current budget that was passed this year. Now, we've made a lot of changes since I got here. Uh, the budget was created and authorized before I actually came into the office. Uh, we've created a whole new department that we're going to have to shift money from streets to property maintenance. Um, and we have some other initiatives that we're trying to get together that weren't addressed in the overall budget. So, uh, we're looking at March, April, making some budget amendments to account for all these changes that have taken place in the first and second quarter. You don't have any questions about the finances? Uh, I wanted to move on to some of the updates. We're updating our city ordinance. Uh, our first draft is due to the city council fifteen February. Or, I don't think we meet then, but that's, that's when our deadline is to get that done. Our update on employee manual, uh, we've set a date of March fifteen to, uh, to be finished with that, to have the first draft. And actually, that's, they're going to have their, their next meeting on the, on the employee manual. Uh, the charter update, uh, we set a meeting or a deadline, a milestone, of fifteen April. And I think they're on track for that. Y'all have already started meeting and talking, reviewing the charter. So, uh, that's our, our milestone that we're looking at to get. We're, we're looking at cleaning up, uh, the school down at Carter, the old Carter school site. Uh, it's, it's a mess, it's, it's a safety hazard. And it's hard for us to start condemning buildings if we can't clean up our own backyard. So, uh, fifteen February is our date. Okay, to get that knocked out. Speaking of which, we've been doing, uh, you know, went to some, some, uh, houses that we've been trying to condemn them, but I think last month. Some of those were, were given extensions and we're going to start reviewing those again. We do have a, the new city ordinance that was passed in, in the last year, you know, week, year before. Uh, so we're going to start using that ordinance. We'll send them letters, give them thirty days to respond. Uh, but, you know, have a city, a hearing, have a hearing, let them come in, talk about what they want to do, uh, and then we can kind of move forward. Uh, we started off with, we had, uh, we're up to fourteen now, that we're getting at. And I, I know there's, there's three more that somebody put on my list, so. And again, we don't want to tear places down or force people to do things, but these are, a lot of these are safety hazards. You know, a, a derailed house can open itself up, you know, to the meth lab or, you know, something like that. House vomits and, you know, bad things can happen. Yes, sir?
They come to the house that got burnt down on, on H Street.
Yes, sir.
What are you going to do with that? My son knows the, the part of the, some, I don't know.
Right, uh, well, actually, we started trying to, to clean that up and then we had a hole, uh, I call it the hole, we had a, a valve that broke out of our water plant. It's fifteen feet underground, it's a big sixteen inch valve. Uh, we're having issues getting to it because it's, you drive around a bunch of equipment. So, when you're digging a hole or excavating and you're going to work in that excavation, in order to keep a canyon from happening, you, you need to invert that hole, I mean, you need to go pretty wide. Uh, so you're looking at a sixty, seventy foot wide hole, you know, to keep your employees safe. You're going to have a lot of trouble working around equipment because you've got a big, uh, water storage container, I mean, right, maybe for ten feet away. Uh, and you've got other electrical equipment in the way, so we're having to excavate around some of these, these issues. And, uh, anyway, so we pulled our excavator off of that to go work up there, catch your question. But our plan is to, to leave the wall, remove the rest of it. And, uh, that way, somebody can go back and build, hate to lose the historical aspect of the house. Uh, because once you knock those walls down, you wouldn't be able to go back to make concrete, so.
It does make for a nice view at Wachahatchee, don't it?
And we're working on it. You're more than welcome to go out and start knocking it down. We won't stop it.
Tommy, over at Carter, are we going to pour it up, the broken out windows, and make it to where it's not accessible to, you know, critters and?
Well, at the moment, there's not a lot they can do to it. I mean, what we need to do is clean it up, make it safe, get all the glass out. Uh, we're looking at hopefully rehabilitating that building. I don't know where we can get the funds at the moment. We're hoping a grant, or some law line, might be able to help us out. We're looking at going that direction. Uh, even a, uh, you know, a Texas State Historical Grant. Anything that might be able to help us, we have.
That should be, sure.
Yeah, definitely.
I, I told you, and, and I raised, approached the issue with the balance or historical permission so we can maybe push that forward. Uh, there may be grant money available to rehabilitate that. Because I, I think if we did it correctly, we could use it as a, as a, a community center of some sort. I know our community center, we ran out almost every weekend. If we can expand that, you know, refer to that ability, people can use that facility also. But we got to make it accessible, so. It's, it's in our future plan, it's something they'd like to do within the next year.
Looking on a port of it as a museum that we talked about?
Uh, it has been discussed, uh, community center, museum, uh, you know, which is, and again, that kind of goes back to the historical commission.
Right.
Uh, because that is a facet that, that a lot of people don't know about.
That's correct.
Right. So, uh, but that would also open up to other grant funding that might be available. So it just depends on, on what direction we decide as the council is moving with that.
Someday, the bubble rights of this town will be gone. They'll keep the history of this community in torches.
Right. The only problem I might have would be, uh, that is still in the pipeline and it's close to the river, so I don't know if we want all of our historical memories, unless they're removed quickly, I guess is what I'm saying. Yeah, I, I'd hate to lose everything to a flood.
So that's why you took all the council pictures off the wall with this, with this issue.
Well, I, I honestly, I wanted to, to update a little bit.
Have you noticed it, Tommy?
Well, yeah.
Well, the thing is.
It's probably good.
I, I want to, you know, the citizens would say, they don't want to know what we did for them in the past. They want to know what we're doing for them today and what we're doing for them tomorrow.
Well, that's what the passage is done for us today.
Well, and that's why we need a museum. But, you know. Yeah, yeah, that's not. But anyway, a lot of, a lot of options are on the table. Use anything that the citizens have an idea, we'd love to hear them. I mean, we always have, you know, ideas we get.
Question, Tommy, the school, the school, I know the school district in that property right off, you know, by the church on Eighth and?
Dale Junior High?
Junior High. What are you going to do with that?
Uh, we, we kind of attempted to plan, I, I don't know yet. We can address that sometime in the future.
Yeah, that's the board on that, don't they?
Yes, sir.
Whatever is left, we can adjust.
Right, right. Uh, okay. Earlier, we talked about city art board. We're going to build a stand volleyball area and extend the water kitchen. And we have a deadline for us on that, on May one. That is correct, yes. Okay. We've, uh, scheduled to start construction on the Plaza Fountain on the fifth of February. So. Twenty-fifth, yes, sorry. Must, must like see it, keep me in there.
Tell us about the digital pictures or anything like that, are you going to present anything to us to see it?
Yes, yes. Uh, we're, we're, the rocks were donated, uh, about the balance of cotton mart house and David Calvert. So we're going to use those rocks, they're currently out, a piece of rock down at the airport. We're bringing those in, station them, uh, the way Mr. Arneschaw can come in and start construction. And we're excited about that. And Corey, if you remind me, on the next meeting, in the manager meeting, we can add that.
Okay.
We're working with the ISD to install sewer line, uh, there are baseball fields up on Thirteenth. Uh, we're, we're trying to get, uh, something done, uh, February the eighth. I, I forgot what field that.
Bonnie Clark?
Yeah, that's it. Uh, I, I know they're doing lots of work, they want to put in a concession stand and bathrooms.
I don't know which one, Bonnie Clark, is that the lonely field out the back or is it the hospital field?
I don't know what to do with the, the hospital though, I think.
Well, lucky to think that we have.
Well, basically, all we're asked to do is extend the sewer line. Uh, the, we're getting numbers together, uh, so the ISD can, can, uh, contribute funds to that.
That's great, that's a good, that's a good deal. They're doing that for a good.
Right, we'll, we'll be doing the work, they'll be doing the, the painting. So, uh, and basically, thanks, that's about it for me. Yep, that's it.
Tommy, there wasn't a sewer line to the old soccer, soccer field or something?
The, the one headed that way. It stops, uh, I believe when the speaker had that house built, uh, he paid to have that line extended to his driveway. And, uh, we'll just pick up from there and go, uh, eight hundred and fifty feet.
So those residents have no exception right now?
Yes. Yes, yes, yeah, because it stops right there.
Good, we're saying.
So we'll be extending that about, I think it's approximately eight hundred fifty, eight hundred fifty. And we will probably drop a water line in that concession stand as well. Anythings, questions?
All right, here's your question, future dinner items, city councils, anything you need to be on that agenda besides what Gary spoke about.
How you know Pat is born in by concern of citizens? I wonder if it's on using our downtown buildings as living quarters. Won't affect the people that already live there, I guess, but their concern is they're getting bought up and starting to turn into businesses, so I have Pat to, to look into what we need for the next meetings to discuss that.
Are they not being turned in business, is that true, sir?
Right, that people are buying and living instead of, they're living and have business, but just living only.
I think the concern is some of the buildings downtown may actually, it may be cheaper to buy that than actually also.
Yeah, so that's the thing, is they're buying and living, not turning into businesses for.
Right. Thing is, some of the businesses that you might have coming in, well, that may also double as their residence, so.
That's what I, I just think that Pat, I think it's one.
You were allowed to allow spread out too, though, like if they live there and they have a business, that's okay.
Right.
But if they're just living there and?
Obviously, not looking to evict anyone, just.
Right.
Let me tidy it up a little bit in the future, so we don't just know what that downtown building.
You're talking about zoning, zoning, so typically, you have what's called hemlock zone, which means residential is one of the more, you know, it's the more protected, uh, less, there's some, um, classifications. So typically, you can live in commercial zones, and that's the way most cities have it. I mean, hey, you can do, you don't have to do it that way, and that's why I told Jason that check and see. And that's the way most smaller cities do it. Then, I mean, you have to do it that way, because you have to change your.
That's what, I had no input on it, I was just passing information that I could, given what I, I can, I can do with Pat and watching, actually giving a play on the manager's sheet next. Yeah, that's what.
The whole, we'd have to, if you want to, you know, make a change to, or push it to the big city and then come back, y'all.
Good, that's kind of me, whatever you can handle, just let us, the concern you brought to me.
I understand it. Anything else? Did y'all want to go into executive session? Uh, Gable left, so. I don't know, do we feel like we need to, do y'all have questions, we can go on to that?
Uh.
She won't be here to answer them, but I can take them and.
I don't really think I asked all the ones I did.
Okay.
That's a little better for you.
I don't think we need it. If there's just, if you have some hot questions, better hit us than what y'all did.
Much to attend. Ooh. Six.
I'll pay to stay out.
All right.
Thanks, thanks.